This is a meeting of the Township Committee, October 21st, 2024. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Hoover Times, by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building, and filing with the Township Clerk on January 11th, 2024. Comitemen Clark.
Here.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Comitemen Sedembreno. Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have a certificate of appreciation proclamations for the record. The proclamation recognizing October 27th, 2024, as Middletown Day in the Township of Middletown. We have a proclamation recognizing November 11th, 2024, as Veterans' Day in the Township of Middletown, and a proclamation recognizing November 24th, uh, 2024, as Native American Heritage Month in the Township of Middletown. At this time, I'd like to ask the Township Committee to approve minutes for October 7th, 2024 workshop meeting, October 23rd, 2024 regular meeting, the March 18th, 2024 executive session, April 8th, 2024 executive session, April 22nd, 2024 executive session, and the May 6th, 2024 executive session.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Comitemen Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. At this time, we have public hearing of proposed ordinances. Our first ordinance, 2024-3431, an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance 2024-3424, adopting 320, the 325 Highway 36 Redevelopment Plan consisting of Block 238, Lots 5 and 6, and a portion of the Central Avenue right-of-way.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2024-3431? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move the closed public portion and approve.
Second.
Comitemen Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our next ordinance for public hearing, we have 2024-3434, an ordinance providing funding for acquisition of property for the Township of Middletown and appropriating $2,100,000 for such purpose.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2024-3434? Hey, Don. Hey, Mooney. Come on down. Don, you were just, you were just waving, right? Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure. What's that? I didn't see you. How you doing today, Don?
Um, my name is Melanie Elmeyer, 43 Green Tree Terrace, Lynn Croft. Um, I did, this was on the last agenda, right, being introduced, and now it's being voted on, right? And is it, this is about West Nut Swamp Road?
No.
No?
This is, this is the 17 acres directly behind River Plaza Elementary.
Oh, oh, okay, great. Perfect. Thank you.
You got it. Don, come on down. Tell you what, in Don's neighborhood, they have some unbelievable Halloween decorations going on right now.
You wouldn't believe it.
They, they are, they are unbelievable.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. I petrify Grant, you know?
There's two people over on.
Yeah.
What's that?
Looks like they're having a contest over there.
Yeah, there's two people right across the street.
Yeah. It's pretty good. Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, one guy's got ducks. I can hear them from my house. Quack, quack, quack.
Oh, really? Not Halloween decorations.
No, they're real ducks.
Okay.
Anyway, my name's Don Watson. I'm living at 1 Collinson Drive in New Monmouth, one block away from Ward. Um, I got one question about this. I was reading this today.
Hmm.
Um, we're appropriating $2.1 million for this purchase, but the next ordinance says that the, um, Stavola Family Trust is donating $1 million?
Correct.
So what are we doing with the other million dollars?
The other, what are we doing with the, well, $1 million is, we have to pay for the property. We can accept the donation and then, and then utilize green acres as well. It's just.
Go ahead, Brian.
Do you want me to answer?
Go ahead, Colleen.
Yeah.
So when, for something like this, there's two sides to it. We have a funding side and a spending side, and we have to adopt that spending side in full so we can pay the full price.
Okay.
And it's on the funding side where you would see that donation. As opposed to issuing debt, we accept the donation. We don't issue debt for that portion of the funding.
Why don't you accept the donation first?
We can't do it that way.
Can't.
What?
You can't accept a donation on property before you buy it.
Well, you accept the donations from every taxpayer before you buy a property, right?
Haha.
Different kind of donation.
You think?
No matter what, we still save a million dollars.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Don. Any other member of the public? Seeing no, seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move the closed public portion and approve.
Second.
Comitemen Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our next ordinance.
All right, Don, let's get that donation now.
The next one, 2024-3435, an ordinance authorizing entry of purchase and sale agreement with the Richard J. Stavola Family Trust for the acquisition of Block 1030, Lots 7 and 10, known as 127 Hubbard Avenue for open space preservation purposes.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2024-3435? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move the closed public portion and approve.
Second.
Comitemen Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have introduction of proposed ordinances. Our first ordinance, 2024-3436, an ordinance amending 2024-2025 salary ordinance.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Comitemen Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held 11/18/24. Um, our next ordinance for introduction, we have 2024-3437, a bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $3,571,000 for various capital improvements by and for the Township of Middletown in the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $3,392,450 in bonds or notes of the Township for financing part of the appropriation.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Comitemen Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held November 18th, 2024. Okay. Our next ordinance we have for introduction, 2024-3438, a bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $4,491,000 for various park improvements by and for the Township of Middletown in the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $3,704,050 in bonds or notes of the Township for financing part of the appropriation.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Comitemen Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held November 18th, 2024. Our next ordinance, 2024-3439, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 423 of the Code of the Township of Middletown governing stormwater regulations to include Article 7, privately owned salt storage requirements as required by state law.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Comitemen Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held November 18th, 2024. Our next ordinance, 2024-3440, an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 540-1,001 to 1,012 of the Code of the Township of Middletown, establishing new stormwater management regulations.
Motion to introduce.
Wait a minute, did I do this twice?
There's, no.
This is, oh, this is stormwater. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Second.
Uh, Comitemen Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held November 18th, 2024. At this time, I'd like to ask the Township Committee to adopt a consent agenda, which would include Resolutions 24-277 through 24-289.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Comitemen Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Comitemen's, uh, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have discussion item for New Jersey Best Practices.
Oh, sorry, Colleen.
Uh, we completed our best practices inventory as required by the state. I submitted it today. We're in the process of the approvals with Heidi and Tony. One of our approval things is that we have to discuss it at a meeting. We answered all of our questions, and we scored a 41, which brings us well above the minimum to retain all of our state aid, which is really our energy tax receipts. So they'll be coming to us 100% in 2024.
100% of?
The taxes that are owed to us are, yeah, right.
Yeah, okay.
The diminished amount that's owed to us.
Their version of 100%.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
What was that previous number?
Uh, well, the number that it should be is, you know, somewhere in the 11 to 12 million dollar range.
But they owe us still 70 million, right?
Right.
It's more than that. It almost eclipses our, uh, entire operating.
It starts our entire operating budget.
Eclipses our entire operating budget. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Colleen.
You're welcome. Okay, we have a Conklin Park request.
Don?
Yeah, sorry. As you know, the township established a policy several years ago about, um, people wanting to place memorials and those sorts of things on township property, um, or bented in honor of, of people. Um, we, we require that they all have to be presented to the Township Committee and the Township Committee is supportive of it. One of the things we found, and I, I didn't honestly know, most of us didn't know it existed, but when we were developing the, um, skate park, um, at Conklin Park, uh, back in the back corner to the left, if, if you were looking at it from the parking lot, there's a memorial that has been placed there for someone who died. Person died of drug overdose in that location. There's been a handful of people who've been maintaining this memorial since, since then, and I think it's more than 10 years. Um, they've asked to formalize it. And, um, they want to ma, they're willing to maintain it. Um, and, uh, they have kind of a good message about, um, you know, recovery and seeking help if you need help, that sort of thing. So, um, I just wanted to run that by you. Make sure you're, you're okay with this person, um, you know, maintaining the memorial. So it's a personal friend of the, of the person who died.
This is, uh, this is the photograph with the, um, it's kind of in the back. If you're at the front, the back left corner. Back in that corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. They want to maintain what's existing there?
Yes, uh, they'd like to put a new tree, and I believe there was one that was there that had been removed. I guess it had some issues, so I think they want to put a new tree, but otherwise maintain it. Uh, pretty much as is. And there's a sign that says, uh, "Please Get Help, Somebody Loves You", uh, that they have by the, um, by the sign. And I take it back, it's, it's actually nearly 20 years since the person passed away.
Okay.
Anybody have an objection to it? If not, we'll just move forward with it.
No.
Okay, we, we will put a resolution out for the next meeting, because that's what we do, typically do. Okay.
Okay.
Township Committee comments.
Comitemen Clark. Okay, Committeewoman Kratz.
I'm good for this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Guess I'll let you bring up Middletown Day, right?
You can bring it up.
Middletown Day this weekend. Super excited. I do got to mention Oasis, uh, on Route 36, the Wild Scallion Building. Uh, big change there, so I'm sure everyone knows the building I'm talking about. Uh, we had the grand opening this past week. Big, uh, big job for Route 36 getting an improvement like that. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Um, just a couple of things, like, uh, the Deputy Mayor said, Middletown Day is Sunday. Hope everyone can join. Starts at 1 o'clock, uh, goes till 5, which is then followed immediately, uh, by the, uh, by Brian Kirk and the Jerks performing, and then fireworks at 6:30. So hope everybody can join. Um, I also want to bring up a couple of other things. Um, obviously, everybody, it, it, it's, it's election season. Be part of the process. Be proactive. Get your vote-by-mail ballots if you receive them back. Uh, early voting begins at the Senior Center on Saturday. Uh, that goes through till the following Sunday. Uh, Monday, uh, early voting will close, and then Election Day the following day. Go to Monmouth County Votes. Check out all the, the hours. Uh, understand where you have, you have multiple opportunities to get out there and vote and get a vote-by-mail or early vote. It's a su, early voting is a super simple process, and I hope you do, um, because this is the last meeting we have before Election Day. So please get out there, make your voice heard, vote for the person that you think, um, embodies the kind of town and state and country, um, that you want to see for, for you and your family. So, uh, I hope you all take advantage of your, of your sacred duty to, to get out there and vote. With that being said, I'll open up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment may do so. Ask that you state your name and address for the record. Keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment?
Good evening. My name is the Reverend Debbie Cook, and I live where I work, at All Saints Memorial Church in the Navisink section of Middletown at 202 Navisink Avenue. I am also a founding member of the Monmouth Housing Coalition. The Monmouth Housing Coalition is a group of, that consists of over 20 churches and seven nonprofits. Our mission statement is "Housing for All, Powered by Love". Our vision is we seek to build a large diverse coalition of community members, spiritual institutions, and nonprofits to advocate for policies and initiatives that uphold the values of housing justice and equity. Our vision for all residents of Monmouth County is to live in safe, high-quality, and affordable housing. I am here to ask for a meeting with the committee members or mayor in regard to affordable housing in Middletown. Please know that I had one brief meeting earlier in the year with Mr. Mercantati, who was, uh, gracious enough to accommodate me on short notice, and I have followed up with an email to him and to each committee member this spring on behalf of the Coalition, but have not received, to the best of my knowledge, any responses. So on behalf of the Coalition, I am here in person to ask for that meeting. As nearly everyone in the state knows, even the nation, affordable housing is a major issue. I often hear and experience in my own immediate and extended family the concerns of families who fear that their adult children will not be able to find an affordable place to live in their state, in their town, anywhere close nearby. And while I realize that Middletown has a range of neighborhoods and varieties of housing options, they are increasingly unaffordable, far too many who work in our communities doing the important work of taking care of our children, taking care of our elderly, and in the service industry, among others. The same is true for many towns in Monmouth County. Many, though, have worked hard to accommodate affordable housing. Middletown prides itself on being a place of diversity and offering many opportunities to its residents. It is also proud of its long history, going back to where before this nation was founded. Its first non-native residents came here seeking opportunity. They faced many dangers and challenges in doing so. They likely did not have much, but they found a place to land here. All we hope and ask is that the same spirit continues on, with township leadership being willing to honor this history in making room for those seeking a safe and affordable place to live so that they and their families can grow and thrive, becoming part of and strengthening the township. Affordable housing is at a crisis point, and one that needs to be addressed now. We look forward to meeting with township leaders to discuss how we can work together to make Middletown truly a place of welcome for all of its residents, current and future, where people from many walks of life can also find a place to land like those early settlers did. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Lana Rogacewski. I'm your neighbor in Middletown on 15 Red Hill Road. I recently moved from Chicago and now pleased to call Middletown my home. My kids are in the troop, scouting troops, my daughter in, in the dance right here, so we are your neighbors. I'm also a member of the Middletown Monmouth Housing Coalition, and I'm pleased to share a voice of support. And I'm standing here with Reverend Debbie and would like to tell you just in the next two and a half minutes, or as much as I'm allowed to, a few objectives of our work in the Monmouth Housing Coalition. Some of you might already be aware of this work, some of you might be new. We work in on a few things. Part of it is what we do in today, show, show up to municipal, municipal meetings and support affordable housing initiatives, to enforce and enable municipalities to honor their fair share agreements for affordable housing, to encourage spiritual institutions and nonprofits to come together to consider building their own affordable housing on their properties and beyond, organize, advocate for Monmouth County to create more affordable housing options, increase homeownership with low-income families and people of color, to educate ourselves and others about racial and economic injustices and how they intersect with housing justice, to train and empower community members to organize for housing justice on their own content. So today, I'm here both as a resident and as a mother of two teenagers. I would like for them to grow up in a community that is racially diverse, spiritually diverse, where they feel welcome and where all of our members of community are supported in different rights, including affordable housing. I look forward to connecting with you individually and as a part of the future meetings. Thank you for your time.
Any other member of the public wishing to speak on? Don, come on down. He beat you by like a half of a, half of a millisecond.
What?
Half a millisecond.
I'm not that bad. Good evening. My name's Don Watson, living at 1 Collinson Drive. That's our last meeting here. It was, um, a lot of discussion about different, um, ordinances. Um, I was hoping to see more of them on the agenda tonight. Is there any reason why, um, they weren't introduced or?
The one's just not done yet.
Two of the three were introduced tonight.
Yeah.
Right.
The one's just not.
The other, other ones you're working on?
What's that?
The other ones you are working on?
Correct.
Some of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Salt and stormwater, we discussed, so it's just the tree ordinance left.
Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you.
You got it. Melanie?
Good evening. Melanie Elmeyer, Green Tree Terrace, Lynn Croft. Um, first, I wanted to, um, speak on behalf of the Lynn Croft Village Green Association and thank this committee for coming to our September anniversary celebration and issuing a proclamation honoring the LVGA on 25 years of advocating for the betterment of Lynn Croft and the greater Middletown area, and especially in regards to safety concerns, pedestrian, pedestrian friendliness, safe streets, uh, traffic, things like that. Um, so thank you. Next, um, on the, on the negative side, there was another accident today on 520. I've spoken to this committee many times about the accidents, the uptick in accidents. Um, it's speeding coupled with turning. Um, today there were, it was a three or four car accident by Neville Drive, and it seems when people are coming off of Exit 109 in the corridor of 520 by the parkway, and they're coming west in, in towards Lynn Croft, there's no calming at all. They're, they're really at high speed. And as people see their sightline, they're, they're getting T-boned, um, either on the Orchard Hill side or in the Lynn Croft Farms community, um, of housing. So, um, I've spoken to the police. I've been working with Lieutenant Secoe, and he's been wonderful. They've stepped up patrol either at the firehouse. They put in, um, signs. They put in, um, speed, uh, you know, radar, uh, speed readers, and they're analyzing that data. Uh, our organization is analyzing traffic accidents, um, really trying to pinpoint down, what are the actual movements? Sometimes it's sun glare, sometimes it's, you know, deer strike or other things, but, but there are really some glaring, um, issues. Uh, and it's really increased since, I hate to say this, but since Exit 109 was, was changed and Lifetime and the veterinary came in, because there's a lot of people coming that are confused by that area. And, um, you know, there's a lot of driver, uh, just, just general confusion on where to turn, where to go. When they come off the parkway, they're restricted, they're, and then they're trying to make up for time. And, and sometimes in an emergency situation. So we really want to work hard, um, and, and help, you know, look for your help in trying to get some answers with this and hope that the police will work more closely with us. We spoke into the county as well. It's a county road. Uh, spoke to, uh, Declan O'Scanlon, Senator Declan O'Scanlon, and, um, we're just hoping that together, you know, we're, people are really worried. And coupled with that, it's bad enough that there's accidents, but, um, you know, I had mentioned the racing last time. Sorry, Don, it is a new thing in Lynn Croft, and people, coupled with the accidents, it's alarming. And the mufflers. How can we stop the mufflers? Other towns have signs for the statute. It's statute title 39-370, and it's that, um, every motor vehicle must, with a combustible motor, shall be equipped with a muffler in good working order and no excessive noise or unusual noise with cutouts, bypass. You hear it on 520, um, right by CBA, 520, down by the parkway, and West Front Street on Sunday nights, it's like happy hour. They're like ripping down that road. It's two straightaways running parallel. They're having a great time. The police know about it. Home Del has responded to that. Um, I just, I don't understand the mentality of it. Maybe you see it in other parts of town, but other towns do have signs reminding them, you know, of the muffler ordinance, and there's a fine attached to it. And maybe we need to post signs where the police have recognized that this is occurring so that, you know, it's just like a reminder that it will be, um, you know, uh, an action of, uh, a fine or police action if they continue to do it. But I really don't know what the answer is with that. I really would hope that, um, you know, we can understand it better and, and get a solution as a community to figure out how to reduce the accidents, reduce the, the excessive speeding and joyriding and racing, and, um, and hope to just make things safer. And, um, we, I was also looking to see the status of the Lynn Croft Acres Fields. It's absolutely horrible what happened. If there's anything as a community that we could do to help, um, I don't know if they've made progress in repairing it or if it's an exorbitant amount of money, because it, and it's off-season. It's just terrible.
It's, I think we estimated it'd be about $10,000 in cost, right Ted?
Really?
Um, we put out some topsoil down to fix it, but most likely going to sod it.
And it can't be used at all? It's blocked off from use?
We're not going to be able to utilize it, because once the sod goes down, you, you have to leave it down for at least two weeks.
Okay.
20 days, I think, is the, is the technical num. Yeah.
It'll be reopened in the spring?
But for the rest of the season, it's.
So they can use the other two fields, but not the, the main field, or, okay. Um, and then, uh, one question on item 25. Um, can the 3% or if passed the 4% open space tax be used for litigation?
Ryan, I don't, I don't know that answer, actually. The, the open space trust fund be used for litigation?
No, you can't really use it for litigation per se unless it's like a condemnation for open space. It depends on if it's for acquisition costs. So you can use it for like transactional acquisition costs. It's like soft costs, engineers.
Title, survey.
Title, all the stuff that's required to acquire properties for open space. But you can't use it for just litigating.
Okay. All right. And then my last comment is just that, um, the DCA has the new affordable housing rules. And, um, I just want to know what that'll mean for Middletown and if there, if you'll be looking at it and maybe sending some public information about it. You know, as you interpret it, because it's impossible for us to interpret it.
Uh, the, the number is 1,200 units. What, no, 1,200 on top of.
Right.
The, the previous, so it's 385, 345 times four.
Okay, 345 times four, got it. All right. Well, 340 are coming to Lyncroft. Um, I know that the planning board is, uh, going to be getting the plans for Exit 109. So, um, would that go towards that number? If it's approved?
No, because it's a new, this is a new round.
We, okay.
This is on top of the third round of the game. They just, it never ends.
Well, I'm just asking if the township can kind of spell that out for people? Because it seems like this, this big number and maybe it's more manageable than we think or maybe not, or just, we just want to know where we stand because it's, there's a tax implication, it affects the schools or whatnot.
Yeah. It's, you're, you're sitting, right, before I answer, before I, where am I allowed to start and stop with this? You can.
Well, no, I, you don't have to say anything except we will order this, we will make, you know, I don't know, affordable housing for dummies. Like I, this, to me, it's an overwhelming topic that, and there's so many, you know, sides to it and I, I want to understand it better.
It, it, it's an overwhelming topic that has plagued municipalities, not because they don't want to create affordable housing. We do it because we're able to. We foreclose on single-family homes and then we donate them to Habitat for Humanity. We go and we build our veterans' housing project. We go and we contribute money towards, through our Affordable Housing Trust Fund towards acquisitions of property so that, uh, nonprofit entities like Community Options is able to provide, uh, supportive housing for people in need. The, the rub that, that municipalities all across the state have is that there is no process, there is no discussion, there is no, um, effort to look at municipalities and understand the restrictions that they have. You, you know, I mean, it's as simple as that. And, and when you are looking at, uh, four units for every one affordable unit, where do you put all those units? You know, I mean, that is, that, you have residents that are demanding that we preserve open space. We have done that. We have upgraded our recreational facilities. We have purchased open space tonight. Purchased open space, 17 more acres, preserve forever. But the, 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 my issue comes at the fact that there are, um, 121 people that get to decide that and are accountable to zero because they hold their meetings at 1 o'clock in the afternoon and 10 a.m. and nobody ever gets the ability, because they're working, to comment on things like that. And so that, that's my issue. That's my issue. And, and, and I find it, you, you're, you're not forcing, or, or, let's make the cycle come to an end. Let's help make the cycle come to an end. What are the driving factors of, of why we see record inflation? Spending. Why do we see things getting out of control? Why do we see housing prices getting out of control? And, and they want, the government wants to act like a counterbalance to it, but if it stopped and took a breath for a half a second and realized what it was doing, then you wouldn't have some of the issues that you have today. And in, in my opinion, you, you want us to pass tree ordinances to preserve land, right, and to preserve trees, but simultaneously you want us to take five acres of land and put 500 units on them. And one and a half acres of those units are not wetlands. But two seconds earlier, you were the environmentalist. It, it, it's, it's, it's laughable. The lack of, of process and decorum that exists for the sake of just passing a bill. And that's, that's the joke of the matter. Um, and it's really horrible when you see municipalities that are trying to do it in a, in a manner that doesn't overdevelop the town and then you're told you're not doing it fast enough. When there are municipalities all across the state that aren't doing anything. And yet we're told, oh, yep, in this fifth round, you owe 340, 48 units. Okay. Again, another lie to the people because they're not demonstrating the economics of what that means. The economics are not 348. The economics are building four times that number of units to be able to achieve that one number. Point to a place on the map in Middletown where you're going to be able to do that. Point to a place in Middletown where you're going to be able to do it for the other units that are alleged to be needed. How about you work with us? How about you, DEP controls 60% of freehold through protected lands. Freehold actually gets that land counted against them. For protected land that DEP controls, that land is counted against them. So it's as if they have to build the number of units that would have been required for that 60%. There's no logic whatsoever. There's no rhyme or reason. We don't want you to work with Community Options. We don't want you to work with Habitat for Humanity. We don't want you to, to, to build on a dilapidated site like we are in, in Belford. We want to chop down trees and build up high rises. That's, that's the rub I have.
Well, I, I appreciate the, um, your statements on behalf of the township, I really do. And, um, but I do think that people in town just would like to understand where we, where we stand and what, how it would have.